Roll call.
Vergano.
Here.
Petroni. Malone.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Here.
I have a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start the meeting, Mr. Petrie, you have...
Yes. Yesterday, and I'm sure all of you probably heard, we had a student, sophomore student at Springboro High School, Demetrius Smith, who unexpectedly passed away. Very unfortunate incident. I would like to ask the board and our community to continue to keep his family and your thoughts and prayers and all the students at our high school as well. A lot of the students really took a hard day. And at this time, I would like us to have a moment of silence on his behalf in reference to Demetrius.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vergano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 1.3, approval of the October 21st, 2014 minutes. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. I'm sorry.
Vergano.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 2.1, Springboro Education Association Report. Is there any such report? Okay. Item 2.2, Springboro Classified Employees Association Report. We'll move on to item 2.3, Public Participation Pre-arranged. No one has pre-arranged to speak. We'll move on to 2.4, Public Participation. That will move on to the Treasurers Report, 3.1.
This is to amend the appropriations that we terminated from the offer last month. We have recently, October 29th, received an eight hundred five million for the energy conservation project as well as a grant from Doug's. And in order for us to start to spend that money, we have to have appropriations approved and set to account in order for us to start spending them.
There's also, okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Vergano.
Yes.
Petroni.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 3.2, Approval of the October 2014 Financial Statements. Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Vergano.
Yes.
Petroni.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on to Superintendent's Report.
Yes. Approval of policy revision as presented for policy 5330, use of medication.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Petrie, what does the current practice is for use of medications within the buildings?
Well, I'd love to tell you it's 100% consistent across the board, but it's not. The majority of what's happening right now, if it's prescription medication, the parents do have to bring it in. If it is a over-the-counter drug, the parents can write a note and the kids, seven through 12, can bring it in. That is right now what we're currently practicing. The Policy Committee, actually, you know, I met with the administrators, all the administrators today with the principals meeting, and went over this again, and it is unanimous that they would like it to where over-the-counter medications, that as well as prescription medications, would be brought to school by the parent. The issue that we're running into has been a array of things. Kids can bring things in a pill bottle itself. They can pass them out to their friends, even though they may not be narcotic, but if the kids are allergic to it, it's an extreme problem. Or perhaps true narcotics could be placed in some of these bottles because when it's accepted for them to bring it in the school, it's an easy way to get it into school. So it's true causing an issue within the buildings, and that was one of the main reasons that the principals 100% together wanted to change.
I guess a couple of clarifications. I've talked to, I've talked to a couple of parents. Granted, I probably didn't touch every building, but they, what they told me in their experience was that if students wanted to or needed medication, that they were being asked to write a note, send it with the child to the office, and that the office was distributing these things. And so if that's the case and we are following that current practice, how is it that kids are having bottles and swapping pills and all of that stuff? And how does the change that you propose prevent that?
It will prevent it because now it's not acceptable for the kids to have to bring it to school.
I, well, maybe I'm not being clear with my question. The current policy you want to change, the current policy says that if you're in grades seven through 12, that it's permissible for the student to carry over-the-counter medication. Not prescription medication, but over-the-counter medication. That student, that seventh grade, 12 student would have to have a parent note on their possession or do that. They're still not allowed to swap the medication or give it to anybody. That'd be a violation of current policy. And you wanted to change that for fear that that's not tight enough control or that students are not behaving responsibly in that regard. And I totally defer to your judgment on that. And what you wanted to change the policy to, at least originally, when you asked me to do this, well, in the discussions we've had, you wanted to have the officer, the nurse administer all medications and not allow the students to carry those. And then later this afternoon, you met with the principals and you may have wanted to make a further change, which was to make sure that the parents had to personally bring those medications, whether it's over-the-counter or whether it is prescription to the office.
There was no further change. That's the policy you had in the last four weeks. I would like to add, we are one of the few school districts that allow a parent note to be all that we need. Most school districts around here, I think there's only one or two that they require a doctor's note for over-the-counter and prescription.
Okay. I understand that you drafted the policy, but there's been some question about what the current practice is versus the policy you're proposing. I'm just trying to get clear on what you're changing from the current practice. I had a parent describe to me the current practices, that they can send a medication with their child and a note, and that that was acceptable. And now what you want to change to is that the parent has to bring the medication personally.
Correct.
Whether it's over-the-counter or prescription.
That's correct.
And so what problem does having the parent bring the medication? Again, I defer to you on the judgment of having the nurse or office distribute the medicine. I don't have an issue with that part. But I do believe that it's a major inconvenience for some parents to have to bring the medication when they're, you know, they can seal it in an envelope, sign the envelope, put the note inside it, and send it to school. And you'd have kind of a pseudo chain of custody. But I think it's a major imposition on some parents, particularly working parents, that they have to physically bring that medication to school, whether it's prescription or over-the-counter. But what problem does having that parent bring that medication to school solve that we're experiencing today?
It takes it out of the kid's hands.
Just a point of clarification, Mr. Gano. How many people are we suspended or children have been? I don't know what the right word is, punished or reprimanded for an abuse of this? Do we have a statistic on that that's raised this to an elevation, just a curious, more curious?
It all depends what it is. If it's malicious intent, we have to also look at when this comes about, the call served perhaps, when this comes about in the building, we have to spend time investigating to see if there is malicious intent involved in it. If not, we're not out to suspend our kids. We're out to give our kids skills to be able to make good decisions. But here's what we're doing.
Well, I don't think that necessarily the number of students suspended is that significant. What we're talking about here is a safeguard which removes, which removes one opportunity, one temptation, opportunity for temptation to do what the parent expects, and that's take it to the child and take the medication from home to the school. It simply removes that. And it's a deterrent. And I believe that while what we have to weigh as a school is the potential inconvenience of parents versus the added layer of protection that we are really affording students. Not only the student who is bringing the medication to school, but also the student who may be associated with that student. So sometimes you implement a practice or policy to prevent something from happening. And I believe that's what we're talking about doing.
So we're worried that if a parent put it in an envelope, sealed the envelope with their note, instructions, signed the outside of the envelope with the student's name, their name, and had it brought and had the student delivered, we're worried that somehow in between that that student might do something with that medication?
Well, no, we're not worried. In fact, I think you're kind of, I'm sorry, but kind of ridiculing a process which is, it is meant to be a safeguard. No one's saying, "I'm worried about this. I'm worried about that." We're dealing here with teenagers. We're talking about teenagers who are susceptible to temptation, susceptible to peer pressure. We're simply removing that opportunity. And so, you know, no one is, you know, you're making it sound like an extremely, "Well, we're worried about this. We're worried about that." You know, we're simply trying to put in place a policy which adds a further layer of safety to the students. The students who have been bringing medication and the students in the building. And I think that that's the heart of it right there.
Dr. Malone, I'm not trying to ridicule anybody.
I think that's what you're doing, sir. I'm sorry. I think that's what you're trying to do.
Excuse me. I'm just trying to find out, if we're going to put this imposition on parents, what is the benefit of it? And I haven't heard an explanation of what we're trying to, to...
I just gave you the benefit of the doubt. I just gave you the benefit.
You gave me a generalization. Other than keeping it out of their hands, what benefit? I gave you a method where you can keep it out of their hands. Seal it in an envelope, you have the parent sign, you have a pseudo chain of custody, and it can come to school. I don't understand what you're protecting beyond that.
Mr. President.
And, I mean, if a kid really wants to violate the policy, if they're that desperate to violate the policy, they're going to stick the darn pills in their pocket, and you're never going to know that they had it.
No one's using the word desperate except you. Well, no one's used that word except you. Again, another inflammatory word.
You're describing all of these extreme conditions, and you're putting the, I don't have a problem with the office controlling the distribution of this. Where I have a problem with is imposing on the parents that they have to bring it. Because to me, you're not protecting against anything. If a kid wants to go around the process of having their parent sign a note and bring it to the office, all they have to do is put the pills in their pocket.
Then let me ask you a question then.
And so you're not accomplishing anything by having...
If the parent drops it off at the office, the kid doesn't have the opportunity to put them in his pocket. Because the parent has it, and the parent drops it off at the office, the kid's not involved at all, so he can't put it in his pocket.
You're assuming there was superb control of the medication at home. I mean, if it's an over-the-counter medication, I think that...
Mr. President, may I say something?
I think that a lot of over-the-counter medications at home are not very, you know, are not tightly controlled because parents believe that those kids are not going to be abusing those things.
I think everybody's had their voice on this, it sounds like so.
Well, I'd like to say something before we go on. You know, the Policy Committee met, talked about it. The administration and the nurses, the head nurse feel that this is the proper and best way to go about it. So, you know, once again, I think we need to defer to those people that are in a position to, you know, to make those decisions, what they feel is best for our students.
I would just add that, you know, the nurse did provide us an explanation of what the current policy was. And the email conversations that I saw was tracking towards this policy representing what the current practice was. And then at about 2:30 this afternoon, that recommendation changed. So I do have a problem with the process. I don't think there was adequate time and discussion given to it, given that the group of administrators met earlier this afternoon and then brought this final version to it.
And this has not changed from what we pulled up?
The writing hasn't changed. The explanation and the reasoning has changed, which is why we had the discussion, right? Because as I, as you gave me the explanation of what we were accomplishing, I pointed out that the language in the policy did not match what the explanation that I was given. And then later this afternoon, the explanation changed, and I think it was probably out of some administrative convenience. We don't want to change the language to accommodate parents here. And therefore, we're just going to leave the policy stand, and we're going to require those parents to bring the medications, even though it accomplishes nothing.
I think the policy, let's just all be clear. I think the policy is written with students, and that's in the best interest of the students. So whether we agree with that or not...
Mr. Anderson, just go ahead. Just one last thought. You know, I think when, to Dr. Malone's point, I mean, to yours, when we're talking about safety, obviously, those things are critical and we should always pay attention to that. You know, students and teachers' safety in the building should always be a high priority. I guess when we make policies or change policies, we're allowed to discuss and debate, which I see is happening here in public, which is good. The only thing I see is that this policy's been in place, it looks like, from 2007. And I don't know if there's been major instancy. You know, sometimes we react to things that occur, and I haven't really gotten an indication.
We expelled five kids last year for drugs. They were all in bottles, and they were actual narcotics, Mr. Petroni. So I would like to not alarm our parents about the things we deal with on a daily basis. And we can sit here and talk about this all night, but when one child overdoses, then we'll have something else for a moment of silence to discuss. It's not going to happen while I'm superintendent.
The issue of you bringing that to light today here is something that I asked about.
But I shouldn't have to bring that to light.
I don't know what the reasoning is. I'm asking, you're asking for a decision, and thank you for that information.
I took time today, when I had very little time, after three or four emails about this, to give an explanation. So I've given an explanation. I'd appreciate it for the board to vote, please.
Thank you for your time, Mr. President, and I appreciate answering the questions, Mr. Petrie. Roll call.
Vergano.
No.
Petroni.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Stifte.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item, let's see, your 4.2 donation for baseball.
Yes. We have some very generous teenage members that have made donations to our baseball press box that the boys have been raising money for for how many years, John?
About three years.
Three or four years. And so we have Wade Insurance, who gave $500, Victory Home Sales gave $500, Jeff Serra, and I apologize if I pronounce the name wrong, $250, Rikner Chiropractic, $1,000, and the Coy Brothers Investments, $1,000. So we greatly appreciate that.
Is there a motion? Sub move. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Man, it's a question. Earlier on, we saw the design of the press box. I had made a couple of comments about the design, in particular, they had the serving of food happening directly behind the backstop. And there was not room to expand the stands back behind home plate in the future, had we ever wanted to do that. And I'm curious as to if there has been any feedback on those comments.
Basically, the design of the building is pretty much the same as what it was in terms of layout. You know, we've changed, one of the reasons why we haven't started yet is when we met with the Warren County Career Tech Center and the architect and all, we changed from a solid block building to a stick building with a brick veneer. And so that required some additional work by the architect that's getting ready. And we hope to have some plans to get those things done. One of the things that, you know, in the discussions about your concerns, you know, the, one of the problems that you have with the press box and the serving area is most of the people that are in there selling the food and doing that are volunteers, and they're usually parents of players, and they like to watch the game. So that's one of the big reasons why the serving side is on that side, because that's how, so they can see the game. So...
Yeah, and I just think it would be unfortunate to put permanent structure within six feet of the backstop. I mean, I think that would, I mean, as a former baseball player, I'm not sure, particularly if I was the pitcher, that I would want that. If you were background noise happening right behind home plate. And then if you put up a screen or something like that, I guess you could do that. But that's kind of like trying baseball seating in the configuration of our diamond with those tall dugouts. There's really not that much good viewing spot. And if we ever wanted to have a tournament or host a tournament game, I think that, you know, taking up that space with a permanent structure is just basically closing out, closing us out of the possibility of hosting tournaments in the future. I think if we moved it back and, you know, maybe there's a way to get a video camera trained so that the concession stand operator can watch it on TV or something like that. I think that would be relatively inexpensive, but the, you know, we're trading, we're trading, I mean, 20 cents on a candy bar for the possible thousands that we could have hosting tournaments. I'd just like to see us consider that.
The other piece is there, you know, at Mount Hefei, we built the stands behind home plate because of that same reason. We had a lot of folks that thought that was a good idea. And it distracted the pitcher so much that they had to put almost a full dark screen there so no one in the stands could see anything going on because the screen was there. So that's the other side to it. If you put stands behind there, the pitcher's going to be even more distracted than the people walking back and forth. So we took your, we took your things to the team, and that was what they decided to go with. That's really what they want to have.
Just as a question, Mr. President, and this is short, I don't know if, I know you're an umpire, Mr. Vergano. Are there any high school rules or tournament rules that you guys have looked into that somebody would say?
Yeah, that's not, no, there's nothing there that would prevent it from being put there.
I think it's one other thing in mind. With these donations, what percent of the fundraising is that completely?
Well, at this point in time, with these donations, I think we're up over $90,000, which should be enough with the fact that the Career Tech Center is supplying all the labor. You know, once we get to that point, we do have a local electrical company that has volunteered to run the main electrical line to the building for free, so that'll come back as a donation, as well as several others. So they're continuing to do that until we start construction.
So roughly the material cost is $90,000?
Yes. Counting the footers, the, what earth movement has to happen, and then the, just the other pieces. That's one of the reasons we switched. Unfortunately, the block that was used in the dugouts is a special block. You know, it would cost another $50,000 to put a block to match the dugouts. That's why we didn't go that way.
Thank you.
Roll.
Vergano.
Yes.
Petroni.
Yes.
Malone.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 4.3.
Yes, this is approval of a donation of one free year of our eBooks for Pearson. As I discussed with the board, we had run into some issues this year with the eBooks. We addressed that with the company, and they will give us a seventh year free as a result.
Is there a motion?
Sub move.
Mr. President. Oh, Mr. Secretary.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. What are the issues that we've been having with the eBooks issue?
The books themselves work fine. It is the portions of it. For example, what would be a good example? I forget what they're, it's the...
Well, there could be, you know, situations where the site may have, for lack of a better term, like in under-construction where they're doing some modifications or doing something. And at that moment in time, the teacher could go in and, you know, obviously want that part of the site, and it's not completed. But then the next day, it could be, you know, so there's situations where that potentially could occur, where they maybe, you know, sunked from within a portion that we knew was there, that they then pull for a moment in time, for lack of a better way, or, you know, two or three days, and then they fix that part. And then, and you oftentimes see that in textbooks too, where there could be, you know, some issues from within textbooks that they can't go in and make those modifications. So there's sometimes those kinds of things happen for a parent being not be able to get on at night. And there could be some lag time for them to get on. And so there's just various issues that are, you know, kind of nuts and bolts at times. It doesn't mean that the program in and of itself is not complete or not available, that there's variations of those kinds of things that could happen. And to us, it's unacceptable. So we bought into the fact that these were going to be available for our parents and teachers and students. And at times, there were some variations to that, and thus we stayed on it. And, you know, I want to also thank very much for Stephanie Frank. She's been right on it. She's our new technology person and conversations with the company to get them. They've been very responsive. They have sent representatives to us, down to the president, and conversations with them. So there's a lot of positive responsiveness to it, but there's also some things that were unacceptable. So we, you know, that's the purpose of the additional year.
Well, and I would like to say, we had some parents that were extremely helpful. Well, I would often get texts. I'd pass out my phone number to the parents, and they would take a screenshot of perhaps at home where they tried to log on. It would stop, or we're able to have something to say. But I will give credit to Pearson Company. They would get on it and try to get it fixed and get it rectified. But I guess my thing is, the textbook part worked fine, 50%, so we purchased the whole product. So that is why they were willing to do it.
Mr. President, or, Mr. Petrie, what's the value of this donation? I might be missing anything in this.
No, that's a great question, David. It was my understanding between $150,000, $200,000, so based on it's a seventh year free, because that's the year, again, when we purchased this, it's a six-year cycle. You have to repurchase. So the seventh year would be free.
So it's not the first year that's free. It's not this year that's free, even though it's this year we're having the issue. It sounds like this is impacting in some way students' ability to learn and access the product. the product.
Not necessarily. They still have the book.
Right. The book is there.
They have a hard copybook?
They have a hard copybook.
And the textbook portion of it worked. So again, these are the extra items that we wanted. Data collection, different graphs that can be generated, different ways to work when they differentiate, they can select different worksheets based on their level, things we've never had.
Do you think it'd be, I don't want to be a stickler of accepting a donation, but I would like to know the amount. Would that be something that, I don't want to say table this because it's going to, obviously we're going to, I don't see why I would say no, but it'd be nice if we had a dollar amount since we're accepting something. Is that something that we can?
We can get that.
If, you know, I don't, again, I don't want to, I don't want to create a delay or anything. I just would like, so I would like to work on that. We just table this to the next meeting if we need a motion, second. That doesn't hurt anybody's feelings or cause any problems.
Well, I certainly would like to get it approved. We're going to get a year free of textbook.
I don't mean to say no, I just don't know what it means for value. It's only two weeks, right?
All due respect, I don't think it matters at this point to get any year for free. But at the same time, we're not renewing anything here moving forward. What's the reason for that for seven years?
Well, I guess the eighth year is going to be a budget impact of that cost, right? If that cost is $150,000 in eight years, that would be a renewal fee probably theoretically, or it could be $500,000 or something.
We have had $600,000 budgeted into when you purchase books.
Yeah, this is outside of that window. I'm just trying to, again, the delicacy of our five-year forecast and just kind of understand what we're getting this during, what we might be impacted for year six or seven. I'm just trying to put on the record so that at least have like.
It was paid for through year six and now it's paid for at year seven. So that'd be the eighth year that we have to come back and pay for some. And who knows?
Who knows with that?
Once, four, eight, seven, eight years based off of technology, the way it's progressing.
I think you can, you can give the board that number, that degree in injuries probably.
I'm texting Mr. Straw right now.
Okay. Hopefully we have these things working and we cease having these problems. But at, at what point do we say, hey, it isn't working? And, you know, thanks, but no thanks Pearson. We don't want to extend, we don't want to keep extending a contract on a product that isn't working. I mean, what's our criteria for, for making that call?
We'll have to see how it progresses from here. I mean, with digital products, it'd be different if we spent double the cost. If you remember correctly, this is 876,000 dollars cheaper than a hardback book. And hardback books had none of the extra options to differentiate or anything like that. So if we would have purchased that and we didn't like the book, we'd have been out double the money. So with this, in six years, we'll be able to either re-up or look at something different. We're not blocking it, it's not our only reason.
Well, sure. I would think that's what you do with any material.
Right.
You constantly evaluate it to determine its effectiveness. And then ultimately, you think this is no longer meeting our needs and we need to go in the right direction. And so I, I don't think that there's a, like an ultimatum out here that by August eight, this is going to go or we're going to cancel it. It's just an ongoing type of evaluation process.
Well, the nice thing is with the turbulence right now of curriculum between federal and state level, if anything changes, they will update these books with a hardback book, we would, we would have been out the money. Because what we would have purchased would have been based on current curriculum.
I guess, it sounds like we're not getting what we paid for. We paid for these tools to be able to, to, you know, get data on student performance and so forth. If that's not working, we're not getting what we paid for.
And that's why we're giving you a free.
Well, I understand, but at some point, if you're not getting what you paid for, you basically say, sorry, Pearson breached a contract and we're done at some point, apparently. I guess, I guess we need to, we need to figure out what that is. Now, but you just scared me a little bit because one of the premises on these electronic books was that we had control, total control of the content and the material that was being taught to the kids.
You already did.
And you just, you just said that they can change it.
But we have led, we have led us to go in and block anything that we refuse. And that's the beauty of this. In a book, you don't necessarily have those and parent out pages. So it's, it's one of those things that, that we have that opportunity to go in and constantly modify and, and, you know, maintain our expectations within the curriculum. So there is a, there is a benefit from that. And it's my understanding that a lot of our problems have been very much minimized. You know, with the parent usage, and I know there's always going to be obstacles, and you're going to have that in technology. I mean, we all, we all experience that in our daily lives in our, in our workplace. So we manage that through the materials that we have. And that's why it's important to note that we don't always use the same materials and that we do have resources that we continually benefit from. So we are maximizing our usage with what we have decided upon.
If I could add, miscue, there is $140,000.
I'm sorry?
$140,000.
Can we amend the resolution to exempt the donation of $140,000?
I'll second that. Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes item 4.4.
That was just an amendment. Now you can accept the donation. Sorry.
So.
Actually, I was just, I was actually just going to add 140,000 to that, to the end of that resolution and just, add the price up.
Let's vote on the motion.
Okay. Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Amendment passed and the resolution.
Yes, the 4.4 is approval of competition cheer trip to Orlando, Florida, February 2015. Asking for approval for that.
Is there a motion?
No vote.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Move on to human resources report. Item 5.1.
Good evening, gentlemen. Approval for the creation of classified position. This is a part-time position, a lone from educational assistant from 8:15 to 12 at Clear Creek Elementary to fill a student honor.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a, this is a, this will be a new position and this is for a three-year, these are by contract or by, how are these positions employed?
This is under the classified contract. It's a part-time person as an education.
So they'll get a three-year contract or?
No.
And, and I know this is just a part-time, but it is additional revenues. It's been factored into the five-year forecast.
No, it cannot be factored because it's a movement of a student that we cannot budget for ahead of time.
It's legally binding to this, it's special education.
Go ahead. This is a, okay, I guess I don't know what the description is, just a student honor. I'm not opposed to the position, I'm just trying to understand the long-term impact, that's all. If there is any, I think it's going to be captured down the road since we're required to do it. So we update the five-year forecast and just ask them a question.
Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second item 5.2 is approval to increase rate of pay for substitute coes, plus eights and student count.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes item 5.3.
Sorry, it's been a long day. Starting at 8:00 this morning. As you will notice, our first action item for budget is a resignation. Tammy Strittenberger is our executive director of instruction. I want to say it's been an honor to work with Tammy. It's been a long couple of years and I congratulate her, but it is not my pleasure to ask you for that approval. You do have 71 other approval items for you. That's your discussion.
Good. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
And I was just appropriate to simple question.
Any discussion or question?
Are there any new, are there any new positions listed on this? Are these new positions that we had?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
Um, sorry, I don't mean to ask a question after that, but are these any new positions on this? Are these replacement positions?
They are replacement positions.
Thank you very much.
I, I've worked with Tammy for a long time in a variety of positions and I would also like to say that I have always enjoyed a true professional in every sense of the word. And I feel you've just brought a lot to your position and I do wish you luck in future.
Well, I'd like to say, I've known Tammy a long time. She's a friend and just an outstanding colleague, but she's definitely made some good decisions in her life that's not hurt her. I'm tired, the young age of 55, going to wait in the sand in the sun.
You're not supposed to.
I am happy for her, but we're definitely, hmm, going to be a different place without Tammy.
Thanks for all the work you did. One second. Appreciate it.
Well, we're grateful. Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. And moving on to item 6.1.
This is approval to accept a grant from Greater Ohio Virtual School in the amount of $14,475. This is a grant.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call? Before, before we go there, there was a line in the, in the information provided that said that, that a letter will outline the terms and conditions of accepting the grant. Funds must be used for the designated purpose. What we didn't describe the designated purpose, Mr. Petrie can fill us in on that.
Actually, what it was is she submitted a proposal and when they sent that letter and I got the letter, there was nothing else attached to it. So I called and they said, it's actually the proposal that she had submitted is the approved items that she's allowed to use for the grant. So we could probably get an attachment to that. Is it not on there?
It's not attached on the board docs, but we can get that out. It's for scales, motion sensors, laptops, electricity sensors and circuits, temperature guns and microscopes. All of that equipment will be used in grades six through eight science classrooms. So we've gotten pricing on all that and the idea is for the $14,475, we couldn't buy equipment for all of the labs, but we're, we're putting them on mobile cards so that those items can be shared between each of the teachers in each of those grade rooms. We have three science teachers in sixth, seventh and eighth, for a total of nine teachers that'll be sharing the equipment.
Okay. Thank you. I don't need the attachment, but maybe it might be informative for anybody who's reading this.
You can get that out.
It's easy to do. It's easy to do.
Make sure to take care of that, Andrew.
Yeah, we'll get that out tomorrow.
Sounds fun.
Is there a, roll call?
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes on to Mr. Pinnell.
Recommend approval for, to begin the bidding process for two new buses. These are in the five-year forecast, they're two special ed buses that are needed to be updated.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, recommend approval for the sale of personal property at less than $10,000. We have five buses that we need to get rid of and they're, they're in dire need of leaving.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Second?
You don't want these.
Yeah, you're a big one. Roll call?
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, recommendation to approve the after-prom committee as a squad organization under Board Policy 9210.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Looking at 9210 and there's a list, I remember we saw something on this organization a while back days of brief, it's a documentation thing, maybe it's maybe it says something a little scandal, I apologize if I'm missing it, but have we gotten copies of their bylaws and mission statement near 501(c)(3) and IRS filing and all that stuff that would make this an official scenario that we have?
Right. We have, they have, and Megan Daly has been in the forefront here. She's here if you have any questions. They've started all the processes, they have all the bank accounts, they have all that stuff, which is what was given to us back in, in March. And we, we talked about this in April and then we talked about it again over the summer sometime. So they, they've got the process, they just, they want to make sure that they, before they dump a bunch of money to finalize the, the things, they do have their, their tax exempt information already done. So they're, they're ready, they're just wanted the approval before they finalize the, the 501(c)(3) things. One of the other things I want to bring up is, one of the main thrusts that they want to try to do is, is bring after-prom and hopefully to another level. So one of the things that they, they would like to do at the next after-prom is to have it at.
South Metro.
South Metro. We met over there with the building administrators from my school as well as a few folks from that committee. There was a good plan in place, there's a good, it looks like a good place to have an after-prom and hopefully we'll have more than 150, 150 kids go to after-prom.
Roll call.
Regano?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
A couple more ladies. Recommend approval for payment in lieu of transportation.
Motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, Mr. President?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. I recall this was, help with my memory, there was tracking of the buses. It looks like we're specifically a couple of target areas here that are going to not be bused. And I think there was a tracking where you had no people riding the bus.
Correct, right. If, if there's, typically the, the, the state and the courts have been very consistent. If you have less than 10 regular riders going to a specific school, then you can offer the transportation in lieu of. And that's, all of these are at that location. We have one school, John the 23rd, that has nine people that want to ride, but the 10th one said he would ride about half the time and the other three don't want to ride. So they, they called the state, we may end up with a, you know, a request for that later on. But right now, these, all of these folks have, that are on this list have, have agreed to the payment in lieu of instead of providing transportation, which is a much cheaper[1701.12] But, uh, right now, these, all of these folks have, that are on this list have, have, uh, agreed to the payment in lieu of instead of providing transportation, which is a much cheaper cost to us. Plus, the state sends us this money, and we just are the flow-through for that, so it doesn't cost us any money to do this. So it's, not only is it saving us the bus and the personnel, but this does not come out of the school district coffers. It's actually a flow-through.
Just for the record, just as we actually went out and solicited, I think you had over a hundred, I think these buses were like full, and you had several interest. So at that point, the buses were put in place, we drove the expense.
Right.
And now you've come to us, and, uh, we'll be paying the people who aren't going to be riding the bus that go to school on this list, whatever this state funding is.
Right.
We're discontinuing it because the buses won't be...
Well, these, most, ninety-nine percent of these people on this have, have been on this list. I mean, this isn't something new this, this year. This, we do this every year annually, and it's pretty consistent on the numbers. Um, so, uh, our buses are pretty full, and they're pretty much, they're running, we run about as lean a bus service as you can get.
Oh, yeah, no, I was more trying to get the process in place.
Correct.
Any questions about why we're not doing bus services?
Correct. Exactly.
That's all I'm trying to put on the record. I'm not trying to...
No, I know.
And I just want to make sure I understood, because we did have that question from the John twenty-three parents.
Correct.
And, um, the people that you provided us on the list, which was like over eighty students that are going to the altar St. Charles area.
Right.
Uh, Bishop Fenwick over thirty.
Right.
Um, John twenty-three, I saw fourteen on the list.
Correct.
And I guess you're saying only nine, nine and a half of those want to...
Correct.
...to ride.
Right.
Uh, Miami Valley School, thirty-six students. Milltown Christian was about twenty.
Right.
Spring Valley Academy, thirty-nine. Um, but it is, and I guess my question is, is there any other school in the Milltown area that we are busing to that perhaps we could somehow accommodate these John twenty-three parents that, you know, they were willing to, you know, ride and dropped off at the end of the trip or something like that?
We've taken a look at it, and unfortunately, it just, it increases the, our routes are so long as it is because we're so efficient. It, when you do add this on, when, when we just developed a route for John the Twenty-third, the first kindergarten that was getting picked up by the Five Points area would be on the bus a minimum of an hour and fifteen minutes each way. So that's minimal. Uh, and then when you tried to do a transfer, all that, there was length in the routes of the other buses, and it, we just didn't feel this, it was the correct thing to do. So, and I know they're vocal, and they have called the state, and the state responded and said that, you know, if you want to do an official thing, you need to, to file it. So it's in their court again now.
What you're telling us is that other than those nine, everybody else on that list is, is...
They're, they're okay with what's going on.
They're okay with, yeah, payment.
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
There a roll call?
Reagan?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Board member reports comments. Mr. Stuckey, you want to start off?
Uh, yes. Want to congratulate our fall student athletes on a very successful fall season. They had multiple coaches of the year, players of the year, all-star, you know, kids that made the, uh, local area teams. There's still more to come, I think, with, uh, football. The Southwest District just came out, the state will come out next week. Uh, so that puts a, you know, I think we're in pretty good shape, barring that, as far as the Hall League trophy again.
Yeah, we were coming out of the fall, I think, eight or nine points ahead. Miami City was the second. We're fifty-four, actually, I think, eleven, I think they're forty, thirty-four, thirty-three.
Which is pretty close to where we are usually.
Yeah, it's pretty...
Going in there. So, you know, the pressure's on the winter coaches to get their teams to perform. Not that I want to put any pressure on Tom Benjamin or anything like that, but, uh... And then I want to thank Tammy for her time and, uh, welcome you to the, uh, club. Hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Mr. Patrani?
Yes, sir. Reagan? Certainly, one step by, yeah, wishes for a happy year. Fall retirement for Tammy. Appreciate your service to the girls room. We're going to miss you. Yeah, I think, uh, it's always, it's always a sad day when you have tragedy in, in Spring Valley, wherever students. Certainly prayers go out to the Smith family. Find peace and comfort in a difficult time somehow. So, uh, we, we always sit back and wonder, is there something that we can do as a board? Or I'm sure that we have staff wondering, is there something they could have done? And students wondering, you know, is there something that they could have done to, to have perhaps a renewed... You just don't know. I came across today, it was part of a radio address that, um, Robert Ray gave. Which, uh, I thought was fitting. And it was part of his radio address titled, "Looking Out the Window." That he gave back in January of nineteen seventy-eight. Anyway, it was longer than this, but I think the relevant line for us here today is someone very wise once wrote that if we were all told one day, if we were all told one day that the end was coming, and that we were living our last day, every road, every street, all the telephone lines would be jammed with people trying to reach someone to whom we simply wanted to say, "I love you." But doesn't it seem kind of foolish to wait for that day, such a final day, and to take the chance of not getting there in time? And he ended this by saying, "And speaking of time, I'll have to stop now. Operator, I'd like to make a phone call, long distance, please." And so, uh, I, I think that kind of speaks to the situation. If we have a chance to let somebody know that we love them, perhaps we should, we should take that opportunity. And perhaps, maybe, we don't know, that maybe that would affect somebody in positive way. And, uh, and, uh, maybe, maybe change their attitude, their outlook, I mean, maybe give them a little bit of hope when they may not have hope. And so, uh, I think that's good advice from Robert Ray. Like, this guy.
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of things. So first, uh, maybe this is old news, but it's not really beneficially, I think, addressed by the board, but a few weeks ago, uh, one of our math teachers was recognized as the Ohio Southwest Math Teacher of the Year. Uh, Amy Markham from Junior High, and she went to State Ohio Math Conference and received this award. And I think that speaks obviously volumes about her vulnerability, I mean, also about, about the staff. And so congratulations to Amy on this award, on behalf of myself and I'm sure of the board. Um, the other item is that last night I had the opportunity to participate in Ohio School Board's, uh, seminar on the, the role of the Board of Education in increasing student achievement. And it was basically a PowerPoint presentation that was, uh, was shared with about eight to ten board members from the Warren, Bunker County areas. And again, I, I felt it was, um, very beneficial, and it, it kind of helped refocus, I think, what we do. Our role as a board member is to provide the best, most solid educational experience we can for our kids and in the process help their student achieve. And, um, and that's what really we ought to be all about. And so that was a focus that allowed the, of the workshop, and that's why. So, thank you.
Well, I was, uh, last week got to do something that I'd been wanting to do, and, um, had the good fortune to meet with, get to know a couple of our administrators, and one was Tammy, and the other one was Lee, and they're both crying, and one resigned. So, John, if you see me coming down the hall, I don't know what that says. But we had a good visit, though.
It's a good cry.
There you go. Moving on to public announcements. You had...
Yes. Well, I know I emailed all of you, but I also talked about it publicly. We have changed our, I wouldn't say necessarily changed our fingerprinting process, but we are now requiring our volunteers to have a BCI background and FBI background check before they're able to volunteer with our students. Um, a lot of these things we found through mission vision, which we will talk about later tonight, it is crystal clear that the feedback we've been given is a lack of consistency throughout the district, and it's, it's been here for some time. And when we really sat down to evaluate the feedback we've gotten, we... Number one, in some areas, we have no processes, and we're developing those. But in certain areas, it's been a little more lax than others. And so the parents, um, they are having to pay fifty-five dollars, which eventually, perhaps, we can look at that because we value our volunteers very much. But we also, um, in terms of discussing of why we do some of these things, uh, when there are concerns, we have to address them. For example, in the first thirty minutes of getting fingerprints done, we had four hits right off the bat of people who had been volunteering. So, and again, it's, it's, when you follow the law to the T, it's interesting what you find sometimes. So our intent is to, to try to create, I think we owe it to our parents, to ensure the safety of their kids each and every day, they trust us to have their kids here in school while they're off in their own lives, working or at home, or whatever it is that makes you to do. So one of the things we have instituted is for someone to be able to volunteer, they have to have the BCI and FBI background check. Legally, if a volunteer is in the building and they're in the line of sight of a teacher, we technically don't have to have a fingerprint. The problem with that is, is then you place the teacher as the policeman, some district. Uh, of, when someone's in the building, they have to stay right in the classroom. They can't be out in the hallway working with the kids alone unless they're inside of the teacher. So as we discussed this as an administrative staff with our parents as well, we decided that having the full fingerprinting is something we wanted to afford with, and have it consistent throughout the building. So I don't know if you've gotten any feedback from parents on that, but, um, we had a fingerprinting day at Central Office, and we did have eighty parents actually show up that day to get fingerprints. So it's our intent to, as we find consistency throughout the district, I will say, I told John today, consistency can be quite painful sometimes. So we're meeting with the district parent council again. They still have some questions as, as things come up, different scenarios, does a person need fingerprint for this? If you want to come in and eat lunch with your students, do the fingerprint. We're going to work through some of those issues because it's not to create offenders, but it's to create a set of poor students so that we know who's around our students each other day.
Okay. Future considerations?
Mr. President, last meeting, we had, at least my recollection is that we were going to, it seemed to have a discussion about space management. That didn't appear on the agenda, so I'm wondering about that space management discussion. Yes. An issue with the number of first-grade students.
We are going to talk about it in the next session.
So with that, we'll move into work sessions. So we'll take a five-minute break. It's...